This meeting of Norwood City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, is the body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please remain standing? On October the 1st, there were several people who were killed and hundreds of people injured in Las Vegas, so if we could just have a moment of silence to remember those innocent people who were injured or killed. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Stickley.
Here.
Mr. Blair.
Here.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Here.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members are present. We have one request to amend the agenda, and that is to add a letter from Keith Moore, Law Director regarding request for executive session. Mr. Mumper.
I move to amend the agenda with that.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. That will be added as communication number three. We'll move on to minutes of the previous meeting, the September 26 meeting. They were distributed by email. Mr. Clark.
Move to approve the minutes as of right.
Seconded by Mrs. Stickley. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll now move on to public hearings. I will declare this public hearing open. This is a public hearing to hear comments, public comments about the city of Norwood's 2018 application for a Hamilton County Community Development Block Grant funding. We have Jennifer Bader here, and Mr. Gears, who have administered this program for us over the past several years, and I would invite them to come forward first to give you an overview as we open this public hearing.
Tonight we come here because we're, the community block grant funding's usually in a three-year term, a three-year cycle, and we're finishing up our third year this year. So what we're doing is having the start the first public hearing for the funding year of 2018, 19, and 20. And Jennifer Bader from JMA, she's been helping. We've been working together with it. She does an outstanding job for us of getting the things done. And Jennifer, if you'd want to come up and kind of let council know what we've done, what we have, and what we're looking for in the future. Thank you.
As Joe said, the CDBG program runs on a three-year cycle, so the next round of applications is due in late November for the upcoming three-year cycle. The county administers this money. It is federal money through HUD. The city of Cincinnati is on its own, but the county administers the program for the remaining jurisdictions. There are certain eligibility requirements, a lot of them as to what types of projects you can do overall to benefit low to moderate income. People remove slum and blight, benefit seniors, remove handicap barriers, things like that are typically eligible. So, and it goes by block group as well. A lot of Norwood is eligible by block group. There are some areas that aren't, and that changes with the census every 10 years, so. So for the upcoming cycle, basic, in the, back to our, just a second, purpose of tonight's public hearing is to get feedback from the public, basically just to take in the ideas so that the administration can, you know, kind of sort through and then determine what they may want to apply for. So this, the first public hearing's basically just to listen and get ideas, and then the second public hearing, which I believe is in two weeks, will, you know, be to kind of, you know, try to formulate what the city wants to apply for. Some of the types of projects that I'm sure you're all aware of, that the city has done in the past include street improvements, park improvements, streetscape dollars, I think the, some other, the youth dental program. Those are, you know, the majority of the projects. So, and your money is typically spread out over, because Norwood gets a fair amount of money, it is spread out over, usually you get money every year, typically. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Questions, anyone? Mr. Sancker.
Yes. The, the limit that you can apply for is, I guess, somewhat unlimited. However, the odds of you receiving everything you're asking for when you're, if you're looking for pie in the sky, would that be kind of considered like, well, you know, we're going to give you this, this, and this, and the heck with the rest? Typically, what seems to be the appropriations that are dolled out versus the applications?
Yeah. For Norwood, and ahead of time, block grant, you usually, you know, the communities know about what to apply for. So communities we work with, we say, you know, you can apply for millions of dollars, but it's kind of pointless. So Norwood over the last, just for example, in the last three-year cycle, let's see, it's between $37,000 and $300,000, I think it was about $500,000, maybe $600,000. So anywhere in that $600,000 to $800,000 range probably would be our suggestion with what to apply for, with probably $800,000 being the max.
Any other questions? Mr. Sancker.
Yes. I believe in the past, if not all, but the majority of the items that we've applied for, I believe have been pretty well granted, close to the requested amounts that we had listed. And I, like you had mentioned, we had some in for streets for matching and streetscapes. We also had the youth dental program, you know, through the schools, some parks improvements, and typically, I mean, we, we've kind of tried to do a little bit for the youth as well as for the general cleanliness or upgrades of our city as well, if I'm not correct on that.
Right. Correct. And I believe, and again, because you kind of, this grant program, unlike some others, as you said, you kind of go into it knowing approximately the amounts that you're going to get. So you're right, those wants have been pretty well met by the program.
Any other questions? Do you want to speak to the, do you want me to speak to the dental program?
Sure.
Just as an FYI, I had a conversation with the Community Development Block Grant Office today, and there may be some restrictions or that we may not be able to apply for funding for the youth dental program. Ms. Pearson, can you talk to this? This is Joy Pearson.
Hi. I apologize for being late. There are five public hearings tonight, so. My name's Joy Pearson. I've been with Hamilton County about two and a half years, and as you know, we're on a three-year funding cycle, so there's some changes that I'm implementing with the blessing and encouragement of my supervisors, one of which is to make sure we're funding things that are 100% eligible. So if another funding source is available for our program, we are not supposed to be using our program funding to do that. So the youth dental program has been funded by the Community Development Block Grant for a long time, and the, there are other funding sources available. So we need to explore where the funding can be sought from other sources, whether that's asking for reimbursement from Medicaid, or using the CHIP program, or receiving a grant from the state of Ohio Health Department, or partnering with the city of Cincinnati Health Department. So that's one issue that I wanted to bring to the attention of the, to the city. And of course, we will look at all of the options and make sure that we explore them and maintain the services that you want to maintain for the children in your, in your school district and in your city.
And so when I became aware of that, I made sure that the Health Department knew about that, and the Health Department and Ms. Pearson have been in contact with each other. So we tried to, we talked about maybe trying to get a grant for some planning. If it ended up coming to fruition, that we would not be able to fund that. I just wanted to make you aware of that, that hopefully we'll get some answers in the next couple of weeks whether.
Oh, sure.
That's eligible or not before we.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes. Question, Ms. Pearson. Say we come up with a half dozen different items that we think are eligible for funding, is there like a pre-check on these requests, you know, prior, like say if we would have, if you wouldn't have been here tonight, we wouldn't have had contact with the dental program, we say, eh, you know, it's been a great program for the youth here, it's worked out well with the schools, and then if we'd applied for that again, and then all of a sudden the application goes in, well, scratch that, you know. Is there like a pre-check list where we say, okay, well, we want to try to put an application in for funding for XYZ, and you may come back to us and say, eh, you know, these probably won't qualify? Is that?
Absolutely. And, you know, I had been in contact with Mr. Gears about letting him know that this was something that we had, because this funding cycle is new, and I'm now with the county and making sure, we've made a lot of changes in the programs that we're doing and the process. I'll say something about that in a minute. But absolutely, we're 100% available. We're here to help all 38 jurisdictions and review any applications or talk about any projects, make suggestions to make sure that we're using the program funds most wisely. And I will say that there have been changes in HUD's regulations as well as the Office of Management and Budget, and we have to be, we have to spend our funding much more quickly. So that's something that's new. The implementation, the effective date of the changes was 2015, so there's a lot of pressure to get the funding out the door and give it to other communities if we can't spend it in the communities where it's been promised and negotiate and shuffle money around in a very legal, absolutely transparent way. But we also have to have competition for our social services. So we have a RFP on the streets right now, and we expect anywhere from $750,000 to $1 million to any nonprofit, to fund any services from nonprofits servicing the people in the 38 communities that we cover. So we're moving to a process that's not immediate for the organizations that we're funding by community right now, but it is for all of our countywide programs so that we have competition and we're making sure that we're meeting the needs that are identified in our consolidated plan and the priorities of the county commissioners. So if you know any nonprofits that want to apply for funding, let them, you know, I'm happy to talk to them, have them contact me. We have the RFP on our website. My coworker, staff member, Dave Spathold, is a Norwood resident. He's here tonight, too, and he's been spearheading that effort. So the two of us are tag teaming questions and answers, but we have a process of being absolutely open and available to every nonprofit and every local government that has access to our funding.
And Ms. Pearson, I'm reasonably certain that the county commissioners made dental health one of their priorities?
I don't think that's a specific broad policy priority area. Health services is a priority area, but I don't know, I, to be honest, it's a, maybe a 15 or 20-page document, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure how that falls. But again, that's an eligibility issue where we have to make sure that we're maximizing other grant funds that are available to cover that service so that we're not supplanting, is the term HUD uses, using these funds where other government funds are available.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sancker.
Yes. Quick question. You mentioned about expediting, you know, utilizing the funds. So if it's a three-year program, are, would these funds, like say if we are awarded X amount of dollars for X amount of programs, will there be a date, like say you have to spend this in 2018, you have to spend this through 2019, you can't roll it over? Like say if you find you can't spend all the money because of XYZ projects in 2008, will that have to be able to roll over, or will it say, no, those funds have to be used, utilized, and spent in 2018, or you lose them and then they go back to the program and then on other, other projects?
That's a great question. The timeliness deadlines that we have for this program are a little bit more obscure than other programs. So most programs, the grant says you have two years to have a contract and then two years to expend it, or you have two years to expend it, or one year to contract and one year to expend. Our issue is we can only hold one and a half times our grant on our line of credit. So it's not project by project. So we receive about $3 million a year. So when a new grant comes in that's $3 million, we better have spent half of the prior year's money. So we give people 12 to 18 months is our guideline. And this, again, is brand new. It started in 15. In fact, when I came on board in 15, we had $1.2 million unallocated on the line of credit. The reason was that there were communities that had left the program and then joined back in. So we moved program dollars and asked communities to push their projects up if possible. What the important thing for you to know is, if you're asking for funds in 2018, we really want the project to be ready. If you're asking for 19, we want it ready. If it's 20, that's fine, but be planning and being ready. And so we work with JMA and other consultants as far as a year ahead of time to make sure that we have the bid documents ready, that we've got the bid schedule ready, that, you know, that the scope of the work is all planned out. And if there's a change, that's okay. We prefer not to have the changes, but that happens, priorities change. There's a public hearing requirement for one public hearing to make a change in the use of funds. For example, there's a city that applied for street funds and thought they were going to get a street levy passed, and it didn't happen. So the next year it happened. So we saved the money to use for the second year. Another community thought they were getting a street levy, didn't happen. We moved the money to parks. So those, we try to be flexible, but that's with maybe $100,000. You know, we have to be really tight with the way that we're keeping the projects moving. And it's a learning process. As I said, there have been many changes that have happened in the last few years.
Other questions? Mr. Sancker.
Mr. Madam President, question. Are there, in your opinion, are there any particular projects or that may be more weighted towards approval versus, versus others? I mean, that you've seen whether streets take a priority, or parks take a priority, or streetscape takes a priority, or litter? I didn't know, in your experience, whether there's something that's more weighted as far as for applications?
Right now, the county commissioners' perspective and the county administration's perspective has been that we rely on you to prioritize the projects.
Okay.
But doesn't mean that's always going to be that way. As I mentioned, we've been trying to do some changes, and we're trying to be more impactful. We've had a new program this year. We had a Community and Economic Development Assistance Program where we had an open RFP for communities to compete for funding, a separate pool. Generally, about half of our funds go to countywide programs, and about half go to community-specific programs. So we were able to convert some funding from the Neighborhood Stabilization Program into block grant, which was half a million dollars. So we used, a little bit more than that, but we used most of that to fund an economic development program that was competitive. Down the road, three years from now, we may say that all of the funding is competitive. It's something that, there'll be open process for feedback and transparency, but that's just, right now, what we're continuing to do is say, you tell us the priorities. If you have, say, say you ask for $800,000 and we recommend 600, we would say, tell us how you would like to split this up. And I will mention that this is not just the staff or the commissioners making a recommendation or decision. We have a Community Development Advisory Board that has 11 people. They represent economic development, community development, housing, government service, and they make the recommendations about how the funding is spent. And they make the recommendations to the county commissioners, who then approve our annual expenditure plan. We do a three-year planning cycle for communities because we want you to make the most bang for your buck. So if you'd rather not spend $100,000, $150,000, $200,000, and save it all for one project, or split it up into two major projects, frankly, most communities are getting $20,000 or $10,000. So if they want to combine and get $50,000 or $60,000 to do one project, we want them to be able to plan for three years. We never know what Congress is going to do. We hope that the program will stay stable. So far, it has. I'm glad you have wood. And we hope that's going to continue. But we, we make those recommendations for a three-year cycle, and then you can make some tweaks. But, but each year, the commissioners have to approve our action plan, which is our budget that we submit to HUD.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So you mentioned that half of the funds go to the community projects, half go to the countywide projects. What are some examples of the countywide projects?
In the past, we've had a water and sewer grant program, the housing repair services with people working cooperatively, some rental assistance through the goodwill, and some funding for strategies to end homelessness, funding to the free store, a spot demolition program for residential demolition, the urban land assistance program for economic development, and then we have this new program this year. Right now, we're out for competition for the countywide programs and services, as I mentioned, with the RFP. So we expect to expend about $750,000 to $1 million on countywide services that are social services or home repair issues, home repair services. It's, right now, the same committee I talked about will be reviewing the RFP submissions for the nonprofit services, and some of the countywide programs will be, will be altered. So, for example, the water and sewer grant program has been around for 35 years, and right now, frankly, most of the people that are in our communities that participate are already in, tapped into the sewer system. So unless it's a priority for a specific community, you know, if there's a township that says, we really want to continue to help people with that, we may or may not continue that program. And we've told the, the local governments, if you want to do a demolition program with residential demolition, ask for the funds. You know, use it as part of your, your projects, so.
And why does the city of Cincinnati not participate with you all?
Cincinnati gets $11 million. We get three. They are an entitlement community on their own. HUD uses a formula. The original program started in 1974, I think. There were eight different programs that came together, maybe a little bit later than that, but if, as long as your community was 50,000 people or more, you could be an entitlement community. And then there were urban county designations. So out of the 49 local governments in our county, Cincinnati gets their own money, and the other 48 can decide to participate or not. Two are in multi-counties. Milford participates with Claremont. Loveland stays with us, so that leaves us with 47, and out of the 47, 38 choose to participate.
Gotcha.
Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you so much. And then like, what percentage do you think of the funds that you get are directly tied to Norwood being in the program? Like, do you have like any kind of?
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Okay.
Yeah. I can share that information with Mr. Gears.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Could you speak to what some of the other communities may apply for that we have not traditionally applied for in the past?
Well, I'm not sure of all the things you've applied for in the past, so I just only know the last maybe three or four years.
And that's pretty much the same.
Six, five, six. We, a lot of communities ask for street reconstruction. It's not for paving and fixing potholes. It has to be for reconstructing a street. HUD does not want these funds to be used for something that could be a general government expense and a maintenance expense. So a lot of communities use this as a match for the skip grants, state capital improvement program grants from Ohio. And other communities use it for senior centers, replace a roof. I feel like every senior center that we have in this county was built 20 or 25 years ago because we've done 12 senior centers in the past few years or coming years, which is fine.
It's 100 years old.
Yeah, yeah. If a building is used for more than one purpose and includes senior centers, we can pay for a portion of the improvements. So that's one thing to know. We've done a lot of ADA park playground equipment. We've done parks in low to moderate income areas. We have a revolving loan fund with the city of Harrison for the first time, something that's new. We want to do more economic development-focused activities. We've done some mini-planning grants, and we will in next year as well, where we use our administrative dollars, which is 20, up to 20% of the grant, where you can apply for a project or an area to do a planning grant. And then we encourage that so that you are planning how to spend your funds, and then you come back and ask us the next three-year cycle to implement what was set forth in the plan. We're doing that. We've, we've done some work with Silverton for their, their main downtown area, and they're asking for funds right now for streetscape to connect this beer and wine garden. There's a brewery going into their current city hall and connecting with the Meyer Village, winery, right there, and they're moving their city hall somewhere else. And we're doing ADA improvements to their new city hall. So there's kind of all over the map. There's information on our website, and any ideas, I mean, this money is very flexible. So we want it to be something that makes an impact and makes a big difference in the community that is recognizable.
And then speaking with a staff member today, I think it was a staff member, said that it could be used for equipment, like for fire departments, but not law enforcement.
It can be used for some, it cannot be used for fire trucks. It cannot be used for, yeah, fire and EMS, for some reason, is kind of grandfathered in, or not grandfathered, but there's some, there's some special allowances, but we would not want to use block grant funding to buy a fire truck, or to buy a quint, or a new ladder. It might be for some specialized hazmat or new bunker gear. It should not be used for something that's considered a general government expense. The village of Lincoln Heights uses the funding for their EMS services. One of the townships has asked if we could use the funding for some specialized hazardous material equipment. So those are, those are some things that, that can be.
Thank you for clarifying that. I just, I wanted it out there to make sure that people knew we could not use it for fire trucks or fire trucks.
Absolutely. Right. It can't be used for vehicles. Yeah. And law enforcement is something that's considered a general government expense. I don't, like I said, I don't know why fire equipment is separate. EMS is considered health services, so.
Any other questions? Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Are there any other grant programs that your office administers that we're missing out on right now, or we're not participating in?
Oh, not specifically. We do have a program that's the Home Grant, and it's, I always forget what it stands. Home is not an acronym. Home Investment Partnership Program, and it is for affordable housing development, or that, we ask developers to apply, and we ask them to work with the community, and this is only our second year doing that. In the past, we've always used this funding for rental assistance, and given the volatility and vulnerability of the funding source, we elected to stop doing that program. And in the last two years, we've used $2 million to provide funding, gap financing, it has to be gap financing, for affordable housing programs. So it can be used to purchase, or rehab, or build new affordable housing. So, and the folks that would benefit make 60% of the area median income or less. So it could be buying a building and rehabbing it and renting it out to people that are in the right affordability bracket, or working with Habitat for Humanity, or some other developer to build single-family homes. So that process generally kicks off in February. We try to wait and see if Congress will pass a budget so we know how much money we'll have, and then ask developers to, to apply. Some are nonprofit, some are for-profit, and then we award the funding that way.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Are there any comments from folks that are here? Ideas, suggestions? That's the true purpose of tonight, is to see if anybody from the residents want to make any comments.
Excuse me, can you, we'll hear from the public, so can you come up and give us your name and address?
Thank you.
Or just, no, we just need your name. Can you commit comments?
Lonnie Alphenbein on Cathedral. I got a couple questions. I guess, I missed the beginning. How much money is still out there that we haven't spent from our last community block grant?
I don't know if you heard the question. The question was how much money is not spent? I believe we have about $70,000 in park improvement funding, but I believe that half of it's under contract, no, $50,000 maybe is under contract, and the remaining balance has, there's a project that went out to bid. a project that went out to bid.
It's kind of up to bid.
Yeah, so all the park improvement funding is allocated, or will be under contract soon. And then there's about $25,000 for street improvements. And I spoke with Ms. Lake yesterday.
Streetscapes, isn't it?
Streetscape, yes, streetscape.
Because we were talking about doing a project that might carry over into, it may not be enough, but we were looking at a.
We talked about a couple of options yesterday, I think it was yesterday.
I don't remember, yesterday or today, I don't remember.
And so that's about $25,000.
I guess my other question is, I understand a large portion of our money is going toward the dental program?
Not a large portion.
Where there's a portion. Do other cities?
It's about $10,000.
Do other cities do the same? Is this unique to Norwood? Are there any other ways to use it on something?
Yeah, so the question was, do other communities use funding for dental services? There aren't very many, the answer's no. There aren't very many health departments in the county. Springdale has combined, I think, with the county health department.
Springdale's still there.
They don't provide.
Sharonville is still in existence. Norwood, Sharonville, Cincinnati, Hamilton County, I think.
So you said it's Sharonville and Springdale and Norwood?
One of them is still available, no.
I think Sharonville still exists, but Springdale maybe not. But either way, we're not providing dental services. I don't know if you were here for this portion, but I was explaining earlier that if there are other funding sources available, we have to make sure to use those for dental services, including CHIP and Medicaid reimbursement, applying for the State of Ohio's Health Department SEALent program. So it's, and we're changing the way we're funding our social services and nonprofit services. And there's another community that requests funding for a neighborhood services, senior services group, and they will be requesting those funds in '18. But going forward, we're talking with them about using the RFP process that we just started for competition. A lot of it is because we can only use 15% of these funds for public services, which is about $450,000. So we'd like to have our committee, our Community Development Advisory Committee, make those decisions strategically for us about using that limited amount, because the main goal of the program is to do more bricks and mortar and impactful development projects.
All right. I just have one more thing I'll just add. I don't have any specific ideas, and I, thank you, Joy.
You're welcome.
You know, I've got a five and a half-year-old daughter, and there's not really any parks for her to play in. We spent a Saturday morning, two weeks ago, going out. Joe, we appreciate your support with that and other people here. And we painted up a lot of the playgrounds, and we tried to beautify, you know, do what we could for our community. But, you know, there's a lot of really good things we could do. We shouldn't have to leave Norwood to go to Pleasant Ridge, or to Blue Ash, to go to Summit Park. And, you know, especially when the county is begging, or not begging, but they've got the money there for us to use, just to be used for purposes like this, to help our kids, give us a place to play. I just, I beg of you guys to use that money wisely.
And the money has been, has been allocated. You missed the beginning of the meeting.
Well, I mean, I understand we're getting some new shelters and some other things, but, you know.
And playground equipment at Marsh Park.
Look forward to it. I just implore you, for the next funding cycle, keep that in mind. We've got a lot of kids here in the community, and we can do a lot of good. You've got a great opportunity to do it, and I hope you use it wisely. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come forward to speak about the proposed uses for community development block grant funds? Do you want to give us your name?
Pastor Sonny James, thank you. I do have a few specific appointed questions. One is, we applaud the opportunity, as a community, to embrace funding on any level, from any source. At the same time, in the Community Development Committee Council or group of folks, what has been the strategic effort to get input from clergy? In some of our, you mentioned Lincoln Heights as one community that has benefited from some of the funding sources. Has there been a strategic plan to make sure that every part of the population, every part of the community, has a voice in how those funds are dispersed, utilized in the planning stages?
I can address that. The county has a citizen participation program, and every one of the 38 local governments has to have two public hearings. So that's what we're doing now. So it's not countywide, it's community-specific. The county commissioners have a philosophy that each local government, whether it's a township, a village, or a city, knows best what the priorities are for their community. So we would encourage, we do encourage, each community to reach out to their community, whether it's through Facebook, or email, or newsletter, or social media. But we require two public ads. We have to. It's archaic, but we are, you know, making these public advertisements as required by HUD. We want people to do postings in the libraries, or their, and be engaged throughout the year, or two years, or three years, to know what the needs are, to know who the partners are. And frankly, like I mentioned earlier, the new changes that we're doing with the RFP process, you know, faith-based community organizations can ask for funding. They can compete on a countywide basis, whether it's just for one village, or one township, or many. But the process is intended to be more jurisdiction-centric than countywide, and we ask each jurisdiction to reach out to their partners, whether it be community councils, neighbor associations, business districts, you know, faith-based, that sort of thing.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Now, in doing so, can you tell us any of the very creative, let's say for better choice of words, ways of using the funding in specific communities that maybe hasn't been trended community to community, community, but any very creative things to really address the diversity needs of that community?
You can try. A lot of pressure.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. We're talking to some nonprofits that are looking at what they call an individual development account, where, and this is more on the nonprofit side, where seniors would save up a certain amount of money, or low to moderate income family homeowners would save up, say $500, and then that would be matched with $1,000. And then that money would be used for improvements to their home. So that's, we like to look at leverage programs. Another idea, we met with Produce Perks today, and they would like to use some of our funding to increase access to produce and fresh food, and go to the food deserts, and work with the existing farmers' markets, and also match dollar-for-dollar, up to $10, for SNAP benefits. There's federal money from the USDA for that program. But then, people who don't have SNAP, because they're not as low-income as others, but still have a hard time meeting ends meet, could use our funding to match those, if they spend $5, we give them $5. And it's done with, like, tokens, or some sort of paper money that's used at that farmer's market. For community organizations, like cities and townships and villages, we do home repair programs where we can match, you know, a dollar-for-dollar, or 50 cents on a dollar, or $2 for one, however the community wants to do it, to meet code enforcement problems. So the community would qualify people, and accept their applications, and accept the scope of work, and there are certain things that are acceptable and not. For example, we can't help with swimming pools, or major, you know, luxury items. It'd be code enforcement issues, but fixing gutters and roofs, and painting a house, and that sort of thing. So we would, the community will say, "We'll give you $1,000 if you put up $1,000." And the amounts of money are not necessarily large, $15,000 to $20,000 a year, but there's a competition. You know, you could say, "Well, you get it once every three years," but it's also going to help to fix code enforcement issues. Those are some ideas that come to the top of my head.
Very good, thank you. And so, in a sense, you are saying that there is a way that the everyday average Joe could also benefit from these funds? And then, how much money has been allocated already? Did I hear or mishear that it's already been appropriated for Norwood? I came in late, so I want to just get clarity on that. How much money actually is pending that could come to Norwood?
The last three-year cycle was '15, '16, '17, and I don't know the dollar amount off the top of my head. Jennifer might help me, but.
Around $5,000.
Around $500,000. So, and when you say average Joe, as long as their median income, they're 80% of the median income or less, which for a family of four in our county right now is about $60,000 a year.
Last question. Has all of the funding that's allocated to Norwood already been earmarked for use?
Yes, when the projects are submitted, they need to be, there has to be a purpose, and we approve the purpose, saying it's eligible. So we have about $75,000 right now, I think, for parks that are under contract or will be, and about $25,000 for streetscape improvements that will be, that's allocated, but that we're determining the actual use. Generally, there's a specific project. 90% of the time, there's a specific project, and we approve that before we actually provide the funding. In the past, we sort of approved programs, I guess, or areas of funding. But I'd like to encourage folks to be more strategic, communities and nonprofits, of course, to plan ahead and say, "This is what we're going to do over these three years." But, yeah, it's, and we also had, I don't know if you're here for this, but we had some changes in auditing, and accounting, and needing to spend funds more quickly in the program year that they were allocated.
You get my last question, I promise. Who in Norwood was the direct point person or committee to help spearhead the direction that these funds were spent for Norwood?
That's probably a question for you all. I don't know the answer to that.
City council holds public hearings just like this, that the next one will, council will be asked to name programs that they want and prioritize those. Once we get an allocation, we know how much is approved for us, then traditionally, the administration carries out those projects.
So, but we will have some public hearings?
There will be one more public hearing in two weeks from now.
Two weeks, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the general public who wants to speak or ask questions of community development block grant proposals?
Then we'll close the public hearing at 8:16. Thank you.
This public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. We appreciate your being here to answer all those questions officially. Thank you. We do not have any requests to address council on agenda items. We do have two requests that we'll deal with a little later on. No reports of standing committees, so we'll move on to introductory readings of ordinances. And the first is an ordinance amending Section 505.071 of the codified ordinances of the City of Norwood, Ohio, entitled "Cruelty to Companion Animals." Mr. Moore, can you explain, there was some discussion prior to the meeting about what has changed or what has added to this section? Can you go over those changes for us and the general public?
Thank you, Madam President. This came out of a, it's Housing, what's the name of the, Housing, Health?
Recreation.
And Recreation Committee meeting. Where the idea was to, what the committee looked at was the draft ordinance we worked from, there's a number of communities that have adopted this, was Cincinnati's. And we made a few changes. We added, on the suggestion of Tim Brown, that we, he's the one that sent me language for this on the, for the, if it's too hot, or if it's too cold. But the idea here is, dogs should not be tied outside on a five-foot chain 24/7. Nobody's paying any attention to them. They get vicious, they get, you know, they're mistreated, they're more dangerous to other people and animals. And essentially, we added subsection D, which no person, I think that's right. Was it D? Oh, I'm sorry. We added a definition of tether, which is A7, and then added subsection D, and then relettered some of the other subsections. Basically, it says, you know, "You don't tether your dog for more than an eight-hours to 24-hour period between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., when no owner or custodian is present on the premises, in a place with unsanitary conditions, when the heat index is above 89, or the windshield's below 20." And then it talks about different kinds of tethers. You don't want to use a choke collar, or, you know, one of the pinching collars. It's basically, the tethering is, it causes problems, and this is pretty much drafted or pulled from the Cincinnati version. I would note, there's no emergency clause by request, so, and I didn't know if council was, council was, or the committee at least was thinking, "Well, maybe we'll go to council and have a reading and another reading, get some feedback. We may send it back to committee because we don't like what the law department did." But that's where we are on this.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mrs. Hanahan?
Just like to say thank you to Mr. Moore for drafting this. I think you did a really good job.
With your pleasure. Mr. Clark?
Do we have the first reading of this one?
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sankar?
Yes, Madam President. There was one question I, we're reading through this under the subsection D, as Mr. Moore had mentioned, under 1C, says, "When no owner, custodian, or keeper of the dog is present on the premises." And I'm just wondering if, you know, if you go to work in the morning, you know, and you have a dog that you don't want to have it confined in the house while you're at work, you put it outside when the weather's good, but when you leave to go to work, then all of a sudden, you're in violation of the ordinance. Or if I, I'm not home, my wife goes to the store and said, "I don't want to leave the dog in the house by itself because it'll chew up everything in here." And I put it outside while I run to the store. If somebody happens to see the dog outside, then you're subject to either misdemeanor or felony, the way this is worded right now. So I just think it's, you know, even if you took a walk around the block after you put your dog outside, and you went up to talk to the neighbor across the street, technically, you're in violation of the ordinance because you're not on the premises. So I just wonder if, I don't know how that can be, I don't know what the, can be changed, but it just seems rather restrictive if, "I don't own a dog, so it wouldn't affect me." You know? But, you know, if, then the other thing would be, say, for instance, you have a, in your yard, your yard is fenced, and you leave the dog outside untethered with an invisible fence, and you're not home. Does that, it's not tethered, but it is running, you know, I don't know if that, you know, posed a problem. It's unattended, but it's not tethered. So I guess in reading this, I guess it would be, you know, that's okay.
Subsection 1 specifically says, "Shall allow a dog in his or her custody or control to be tethered outdoors and then for more than eight hours." So it does talk about tethering.
So I can leave, pardon me.
Mr. Sankar?
So I can leave if I have an invisible fence, of which a dog could potentially break through the fence and cause harm, or I could tether it and be gone, and then be in violation of the ordinance. I guess I can question the law director if there's.
Mr. Moore?
If that's how that reads.
Thank you, Madam President. The purpose of that clause, and I'll be right up front and honest about it, I don't have a fence, but I have a dog. I used to have two, now I've got one dog. He likes to be outside. He's outside regularly, more than eight hours a day. He's there when I leave and come back. I don't, I work at home, so I'm not usually gone that long. But the idea, the logic behind this, that provision about leaving the dog tied up when you're not there is, if the dog gets tangled up in the lead and is in distress and is yelping, somebody should be there to take care of the dog. I personally would be just as happy to take that subsection out, because, I agree with you. I think that if, you know, the dog is tethered, I'm going to walk down to UDF a couple blocks away, get some ice cream, and come back. I don't want to have to put the dog in the house. The dog doesn't want to be in the house. But the committee asked me to keep that clause in there, and so I put it in there because I don't get to vote. But I'd be more than happy if council wanted to take that out.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. I have no problem if we take it out, but I do, would like to comment on it. I don't think people should go to work and leave their dogs outside to bark in case they do get in trouble. And I will just say, my sister's dog was tethered, and it got tangled by the team. They came home, the blood was in the eyes, and the dog was brain damaged. It happens. But, yeah, and I don't like seeing people leave their dogs. Too many times, I mean, I've been to properties, I buy property, I've gone to properties that have been for sale, and there's a doghouse with this dog on a three-foot tether that you know. sale, and there's a doghouse with this dog on a three-foot tether that you know lives there, it doesn't go in the house, it lives there on this three foot, and it's really sad. Um, and I don't know how the rest of the committee feels about taking that out or rewording it, I would have no problem if we wanted to do that.
Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, I mean, if, if it's something that we as a council would wanna kick around, we're not gonna have all three readings to see some feedback on, on that before just scratching it. I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm, it's just a topic for conversation, um, not saying to necessarily take it out, maybe there's another way of wording it, or maybe there's another way around it, however, I just wanted to bring that up to everybody's attention for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Any other discussion? So, the motion on the floor is to have the first reading. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Sticklin.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye of the motion carries, please have the first reading.
Ordinance amending section 505.071 of the codified ordinances of the city of Norwood, Ohio entitled Cruelty to Companion Animals.
Next is, an ordinance amending section 1759.01 of the codified ordinances of the city of Norwood, Ohio entitled nuisances. With your pleasure, Mr. Bonzel.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I just had a question to the law director through the chair, if you don't mind. Uh, so, this ordinance is written, uh, slightly different from the way that, um, the Health and Committee originally envisioned it being, uh, written, I was just curious if you could talk to that and talk to some of the reasons why.
Mr. Moore.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, again, this was to deal with the situation of, um, if there is tall grass in the city right-of-way, in the Devil Strip, um, that can be dealt with under the code, if there are other plants that are there that are not grass and are not one of the listed noxious weeds, um, then that can cause a problem, and there's some particular houses where there is, I'm not sure exactly what it is, but it's kinda, it looks kinda painful to walk against if you're getting out of your car kinda thing, and it's, it's been an ongoing issue, so what are we gonna do? And Mr. Bonzel pulled up some things from the city of Cincinnati, where the city of Cincinnati will mow back the whole, they will like get the cages map, apparently, and mow it back, so it'll be up to the sidewalk and then like five feet beyond, depending on exactly where the end of the city right-of-way is. Um, and so I took a look at their code, and their code is really complicated, and so there's lots of regulations about specifically what's allowed within the city's right-of-way and what's not, and if there's a fence, you can go maybe into the right-of-way up to the, it's very complicated. We looked at that in the, in the, uh, in the committee meeting, um, the same committee when we talked about the dog tethering, and so I, coming out of that was the idea was, okay, we're gonna try to do something like that, put some kinda restriction on, you know, you can't plant trees, 'cause right now, you can't allow to plant trees in the city's right-of-way without the approval of the Safety Service Director, um, so let's add any other kinda plant, if any other kinda plant is there without the permission, then you have to take it out, um, and I did a draft version of that and sent it out to the committee members and to the Health Department, and the Health Department instead came back and said, "Yeah, no, that's not gonna work, I don't, I don't think that's valid," so, um, that's why you go to the, eh, the people that actually are gonna enforce whatever it is you're passing, so they're comfortable with it. And I said, "Well, how about if we just do the same eight-inch limit for grass, for anything else planted in the Devil Strip except for trees?" Um, and he said, "Yeah, that would deal with the problem we have," so that's what I did, is to add the definition of "any plant other than a tree within the right-of-way strip between the sidewalk and street in excess of eight inches in height." Currently defined it, that, define that as a nuisance, the way it defines grass taller than eight inches in height anywhere on the property is a nuisance. And so, that seems to work for the Health Department, and, uh, that's what I drafted and presented to council to see what you guys wanna do with it.
And the issue was that they didn't like the approval by the Safety Service Director? I'm just thinking, I'm just wondering if we might, and I, I have to look and see where it is, I'm wondering if we might be in violation as, of this. There were trees and decorative grasses planted along Montgomery Road up by Frish's and the, um, Old Quality Hotel that are decorative grasses, I think, that are in the Devil Strip, I'm not certain. So that would be a violation of this?
It probably would be, I mean, and, and that was kinda the thing, is, the idea, the problem was that, um, with, one of the issues, whether it was grandfathered, for example, one of the issues we have with trees is, okay, you didn't get permission for that tree, and it's fallen down, so we're gonna make you cut it down, and we can't do that, it's sort of grandfathered, and I understand that for buildings, and I understand that for things that have some large intrinsic worth, in my opinion, you can't grandfather a flower, you know what I mean? You can't grandfather a shrub, I don't think that there's a grandfathering right to, "Oh, I planted that, you can't take that," I, eh, within the city's right-of-way. Uh, I, I think that, that, yeah, I mean, that's one of the things, is like, there are a few places where, and so that's why I started with, yes, if you don't have the permission of the Safety Service Director, then you have to cut it down, um, but yeah, there's, there are a few, there aren't many, but there are some places where that's the case, and so, yeah, this is one of those, it's, it's hard to come up with, so we may wanna put it back to committee, or, um, you know, we'll go back and try it again.
Up on the New Xavier Project might be another place where-
And, and that, you know, if you're subject to a PUD, that would be a different kinda thing, I'd have to check on commercial versus, I mean, that may be a different, um, so I have, there's not a lot of commercialists like that, but, um, 'cause most of it's just paved, there's not a lot of Devil Strip.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Um, thank you, Madam President. Could we add a clause, just like with trees, um, about permission from the Safety Service Director, would that then cover the plantings you have?
No, Mr. Moore, that, can you speak to that, was that what they did not like?
Well, it was the idea that if you don't have permission, eh, yeah, it was the idea that it's grandfathered, if we just say everything, you can't be over eight inches, as opposed to specific types, I, I think, I, I don't know, I'd have to go back and talk to the people in the Health Department and see what they thought about that particular approach, so.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. And, you know, as I've talked to other residents about, you know, this potential ordinance and about what we're trying to accomplish, yeah, there are definitely, we do have to make it probably a couple of changes to ensure that, you know, the things that have city permission for one, you know, or, uh, can go through, but then, but we also, though, just wanna, you know, I know that some, there are some opposition I've heard to an ordinance like this, but I do think, though, it's extremely important that we kind of move forward, because there are properties in the city that, um, are, that have random plants and things growing that have been there for 10 years, and the city's not been able to do anything about it, there's been no action taken, and that we've, we need to take some action, because it's, there's certain properties where the plants on the right-of-way are a nuisance, and they're nuisance to people walking, they're nuisance just to the neighborhood, if you're driving and you're parking and wanna get out of your car, it's, uh, pretty much impossible to do. So, uh, long story short is, I just wanna say that we, I'm glad that we're moving forward, I think it might be a good idea to put it back into the Health Committee, just to make, you know, evaluate some more changes, uh, consult with the Safety Service Director some more, uh, and I guess, uh, understand the objections from the, the Health Department person, but I do wanna make sure, though, that, uh, you know, we continue forward with this and that, uh, you know, we don't let this end, so, I would make a motion to move this ordinance to the, uh, Health and Recreation Committee.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Mrs. Hanahan.
Um, thank you, and I do agree with Mr. Bonzel, at the same time, we'll talk about the tethering, but I'd like to go through, uh, the chair, Madam President, and see if the mayor has any comments on this.
Mayor.
Sure, um, one of the problems with this type of legislation, it comes up, and what, what happens is, we have two or three places that are, they're, they're a point of contention. So then, then this council really tries hard to legislate for two or three places, and by doing so, you create problems in 50 other places. I'll give you an example. There's a location, and I don't wanna say them, because my guy will be up there cutting stuff down. There's a woman that owns a building, and she's got these, these nice little trees, she keeps them trimmed, there's little rose bushes, and it's really, really nice. My concern is, is that it's, it's, it's groomed, that area's just really nice. She keeps it great, she owns a four-family, she works hard, she keeps it really nice. And, and what really concerns me when legislation like this occurs, and somebody says, "Well, she's in violation," so we go and cut her rose bushes down. I, I'm seeing, this is where sometimes the best intentions, we pass legislation for three or four places, and I know exactly where you're talking about. Exactly, so, we, we take, we take basically one house, and then we attack everybody else. I, I guess what I'm saying is, maybe we should explore the option of looking at that one place, because contrary to what people believe, that safety director's time is rationed, it's taken up all the time, so now we're gonna say, "Well, if you wanna plant it, you gotta talk to Joe Gears." Well, then you beat Joe Gears like a random mule, because you won't, you won't let him plant a bush there. So there's a lot of ramifications to it. We, we'll be glad to assist in any way we can, but my problem, my only difficulty is, is that we go after two or three places, and then we end up inadvertently, unintentionally, punishing somebody else, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. And, you know, with all due respect on that, I think that we do, and I, and I do agree, we need to make sure that we don't, I think that the way it's written now, we do, we probably need to go look at it and make sure that we write it in a way that we don't hurt, especially on Floral Avenue, there are few people have some shrubs and stuff on, in that tree, the tree right-of-way, we probably need to look at how we can allow some of that. Uh, but I do think, though, I mean, I've worked, I've talked to the Safety Service Director personally about this, and I, I think his hands, from what I've understood, are tied on doing anything about the properties that are in question. And, you know, I, it's been, from what I've heard, it's been 10 years, that things like, that it's looked similar to how it looks now, it might've looked better a couple of years, might've looked worse a couple of years, but it's been in that sa, same condition, so, uh, if there are any ideas for ways that we can work on it in existing legis, with the existing legislation, that's totally fine, but other cities have, uh, restrictions like we're trying to do, because the right-of-way is owned by the city, so, other cities have restrictions like that on what you can plant there, and for, for good reason, so I do think that we need to continue looking forward, but I agree with the mayor that we have to make sure that we're not hurting 50 others, that we need to make sure there's reasonable exceptions in there to allow for some of the things that he's referring to, so, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any other discussion? Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes, thank you, I'd, thank you, Madam President, and I'd like to say, Mayor, your point is taken. Um, I do think we do need to discuss this. Um, this was also brought up, this property in the Health and Housing Committee, and we were pretty much told there wasn't, we couldn't do anything. The amount of calls I get on this one property is amazing. Um, it's not, you know, one or two calls every six months, you know, the emails, the texts, but I will, we will definitely, um, take your advice into consideration, and we will try to reword this then, thank you.
Any other discussion? So the motion on the floor is to place, uh, this ordinance into the Housing, Health, and Recreation Committee. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Sticklin.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye of the motion carries. Um, we have no introductory readings of resolutions or administration reports, we do have two requests to address council. Um, the first is Kirsten James, if you will come forward, give us your name and, um, address, and you'll have five minutes to address council.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Kirsten James, I reside at 1830 Hopkins Avenue in Norwood, and I just want to, um, bring you guys a breast of, um, our after-school program called Elevations, After, After School Enrichment Program, we are a faith-based, um, after-school enrichment program, where we provide tutoring, uh, life skills training, career exploration, um, to, and character building to students who are pre-K through 12th grade, and we are, um, we are teaching our children about being the change, so we have a mantra where we say, "Be the change." Say it louder, so they can hear you, "Be the change."
I am the change.
All right, so those are some of our, our participants back there. Our mantra basically means that, uh, we believe that youth have the opportunity and the potential to make a difference and a more positive difference wherever they are, so, we talk about being the change. Um, some highlights, um, we've been able, with the help of Most Valuable Kids, been able to provide our young people with trips to the Cincinnati Ballet for tours, behind-the-scenes, um, Cincinnati Symphony Orchestra, uh, Bingo's games, we were provided with the, excuse me, a private, um, a private suite for several of our kids, which was very nice, um, and also the Cincinnati Reds, FC Cincinnati Soccer, and so forth, excuse me. Uh, we are partnering with the Norwood Library to put on a game day October 30th, um, where the kids will do some video games and also have some board games, excuse me, for them. And also coming up, um, for this next week, we are doing Toys for Tots registration, so we have open registration for, um, children newborn to 13 years of age, and we're asking the parents to come and join us, starting tomorrow afternoon at 2:30 to 5:30 at the library downstairs. Um, they can bring all their documentation, picture ID for the adults, um, proof of their address, like a utility bill or rental agreement, um, if they are guardian, uh, like a grandparent, taking care of their grandchildren, custody papers, um, they have to bring either their child's birth certificate or medical card, and, um, we'll be at the library tomorrow, October 11th, 2:30 to 5:30, um, Monday at the library, October 16th, excuse me, 2:30 to 7:30. Wednesday, next Wednesday, October 18th, 2:30 to 5:30, all at the library. Um, this coming Saturday, October 14th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, we'll be at the Richard Linder YMCA in the lobby, signing up families as well, and then again, on that following Saturday, October 21st, 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and again, that afternoon, later in the afternoon, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. Um, applications will not be processed without all the required documentation, so, we just wanted to, um, get you all's support and spread the word. Um, we will be posting this on our Facebook page for Elevations as well. Are there income restrictions? Um, we are, this, Toys for Tots is usually geared towards families who particularly are either low-income, um, they either meet the poverty, poverty guideline or below poverty guideline, um, they receive services from JFS, things like that, so.
So they need some proof of income as well?
Um, only if they are working, and they don't have proof of insurance, um, it says that they're required to bring their last 30 days, um, some type of verification, showing like pay stubs or things like that, so. Thank you. And this is one of our very supportive parents, Ms. Dee. Um, just, like, just. She's a, a very supportive, uh, parent of ours, that, um, she helps out with the kids and transporting them to, um, some of our field trips and things like that, so we greatly appreciate our parents, so, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Pastor Sunny James. Again, your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Thank you, uh, again, Pastor Sunny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue. I, uh, wanted to just, um, say, you know, I haven't been around for a while, uh, my wife has been keeping me extremely busy, uh, working day and night, literally, uh, this past summer, uh, with her program, we had activities for the youth literally almost every day of the summer, and so, I wanted to stop by and share some of the real unique and positive things that's happening out of that Elevations program, which is also in partnership with Norwood Neighborhood Services, and in our schools, we've gotten away from teaching the children how to sign their name in cursive. Well, the other day, my five-year-old, we went to a restaurant, and not on the main copy receipt, but on my copy, I handed her the receipt, and at five years old, she was able to actually sign her name in cursive. And so, with the Elevations program, one of the reasons why I encourage the city to stay connected, get it connected, is because it's really teaching the children how to address the issues of life. One of the best things that I'm so surprised, they didn't really do it real well back there a minute ago, but I wanna give them a chance to do it now, is during the session, Sister Kirsten will say a saying, and then the young folks, immediately after, they yell this saying out, and, and I'm so excited about it, because there's this one young boy who came to me one day, and he said, "Pastor, it's so hard doing the right thing, I'm not really sure I can." And I thought- And I thought about that for a second, and I asked him to come with me to his mother, and we did. And I asked her for just six weeks, a six-week commitment, to have this young boy come with us and stay with us. And I heard this chant in the room with the kids, and when it came time for them to say it, he said it, and he did his hands like this, and he reminded me of like a Bruce Lee movie, when Bruce Lee would go, wah! And after he hit his target, he'd shake for a minute and solidify it. And this young boy said this, and this is what they are being taught to believe, which actually can help them one day fill some of these seats here. And so when the time comes throughout the day, Sister Kirsten says, be the change?
I am the change.
Be the change?
I am the change.
Be the change?
I am the change.
And I just want you all to know that in this program, it's not just about tutoring them. That's the main focus. But the real focus, and the reason why it's deterred my desire to participate in city things and things like that, is because my wife told me point-blank I couldn't, first of all. And she said, I need help with these children. And so that's what we've been doing every single day. Last year, we started with one day at the library, and we partnered with the YMCA, and we did some community activities that many of you came and supported. And now this year, we've increased it to two days during the week. And Ms. Kirsten is doing a great job with the children, but I just want to encourage the city and the families that are out there to get involved, because she mentioned some of the activities that they've done, but, I mean, they've, can you imagine a lot of at-risk students going to see La Boheme, the opera? And it was amazing when the kids walked in, the looks on the faces of everybody, like, oh, boy, where are they going? But then to see these young people, instead of doing things wrong or not acting cordial or whatever, to sit there through an opera production and to really enjoy it. And I just wanted to allow some of these young folks, they were really impressed, to say, where's the mayor? And to be able to show these young folks that people in public office are just like you. They were once in the third grade. They were once on city council. And so we want to teach them through these kind of activities. Some might say, look at Pastor James, got those poor babies up here late at night, it's a school night, you know they have to go to bed. Well, the reality is, we have a whole community of kids out there right now, way past 10 or 11, still up playing video games. So if we can take time out to show these children the importance of being involved with the city, I think it's well worth it. I do appreciate council members for the time you guys have served our city. I applaud you all. And I'm being told my time is up, as usual. It is good to see you guys continue to pray for our family. My wife did lose her father recently, and she continues to still press her way through with all of these community activities and events. And I do look forward to supporting those of you that I do believe are in the best interest of our city and in our community. And I want to applaud you all for continuing your excellent work. And I want to say to our mayor, thank you for your wonderful service and your dedication to the city of Norwood. I mean that from the bottom of my heart.
I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. God bless you all, and let's just keep striving for greatness. Be the change?
I am the change.
Can we give the kids a?
Move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, I wasn't prepared to do this, so I might be bit scattered. Several of you were here when I walked in tonight. I'd been at a meeting about Carpenter Flats and TWG Development. This was a development that back in May, they had asked, they had come and they wanted city council to approve a CRA. The more we looked into it, we came back, we said no. We also had a resolution, we put together a resolution, because part of what they were doing is they were going for LIHTC credits. And the Ohio Finance Agency was involved with this, and I spoke with a Mr. Craig. At that time, he told me that the requirements for them applying for these credits were that their proposed project met our zoning requirements. They didn't meet our zoning. We proved that, we sat here, we did a resolution that was to be sent to the state to say it didn't meet our zoning. Problem with this was, there was a small typo, well, I don't know if it's a typo, it's the way it was written. It said it may not meet, instead of does not meet, zoning requirements. What had happened, and this is what's so upsetting, is that Jerry Stoker had previously sent a letter to the state as the building commissioner, and said it did meet our zoning requirements. And it didn't. It also said that it was determined that the city of Norwood, it was determined that there was a need for low-income housing or senior housing in Norwood. I don't know of any study that was done, I haven't seen the documents, is this something Jerry just said, hey, there's a need for this? I don't know. But I do have a lot of questions about this, because he wrote a letter saying it did meet zoning when it didn't. So because of the resolution, these, this company got the tax credits, so they are coming to the city. I sat at the meeting tonight, and they were quite clear that they are coming, they're going to be here. One of my first, my first concerns, as I was sitting there listening, fine, you know, just asking questions, and the question about age came up. And I have a letter here from Carpenter Flats, back when they wanted us to support them. And the question was, who can live at a senior property? The response was, in writing, our senior properties are 100% age-restricted. The head of household must be age 55-plus. If there is a spouse or significant other, they must be age 45-plus. This is written in all our senior housing leases. Our typical resident is 65 to 70 years old. No children or anyone under the age of 45 is allowed to live in the building. So the question was posed again tonight, thinking, okay, they're going to say 45. No, children are allowed. Their only age restriction is one person needs to be 55 years old. To me, that's not senior living. They could have their child there, their grandchildren living with them. Now, it's restricted by bedrooms, but, you know, a two-bedroom can have up to four people, three to four people, depending on how our zones are. This is not what we were told back when they were trying to get us to sign this. I asked them about parking. They did not meet the parking requirements. They told me tonight, they said, oh, we will not have to go for any variances. And I said, all right, so you have 56 parking spaces on-site, and you have the proper setbacks. Yes, 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 we do, we do. A few minutes later, oh, well, we'll probably be utilizing street parking to get those I just, you know, this is so ridiculous. I mean, we're getting conflicting, and we got conflicting information. They finally got to the point where they said, no, you didn't get any conflicting information. You know, we're not going to talk about this anymore, we're only going to talk about building design. A few of the people there were upset, but a few of them weren't, and they didn't understand my upset. But when we sat in meeting after meeting, several of us sat in these meetings, and we're told one thing, and then once it goes through, you know, this is, I, it's just really upsetting, because when somebody tells me something, especially if it's writing, you know, I tend to believe what they say. I personally am not against senior low housing, low-income housing. I'm not against that. I don't think Montgomery Road is the place for it. That's not our vision for Montgomery Road. And I just wanted to state this, because I believe this might be coming to the planning But people need to speak up, and if they have an issue with this, they need to let us all know. Because they're just, this wasn't right. They did not meet the requirements. And yet our building commissioner sent the state a letter in saying they did, and that's why they are here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Any other unfinished business? Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President. To follow up on Mrs. Hanahan's comments there, if the clerk could send a letter to the Building Department and also the Planning Commission, that if there are any public meetings to be held in regards to this particular project, that council be notified of the time and date so that maybe more council members can be, be present to hear what their actual proposal's going to be. So if, that way, we'd be aware of it, because a lot of times, we wouldn't hear about it. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Mr. Bonso.
Yeah, I would just like to hear if the mayor has any comments on what's going on here.
Mark down the time and date. This, this is partly my fault. I wrote a letter. It comes down to me. I was given the impression it was one thing, and it wasn't, and I wrote the letter. Then I found out afterwards about the zoning, and that's when we had the issues. So I can tell you this, that the individual that was here, they sent down a substitute after he, his, you know, really messed up when he came before, and made these, you know, disingenuous statements. So as far as I'm concerned, and Mr. Gears is also here, that Planning Commission, if it doesn't meet the zoning, it doesn't meet setbacks, it doesn't meet it. And, you know, we'll do the battle on the parking. One of the conversations we had at the last Planning Commission meeting, that was that we talked Chris Brown, because we had put some PUDs over there, and one of the discussions we had, we should have just went down further, because we've added on to it. And that was something that we had discussed, that when we was putting those PUDs down there, we should have moved down further, and we didn't. And so that was the issue. So if somebody's going to build right up against the street, and they think they're going to count that, I don't see how you can have the parking. There's a small area across the street behind the old Futurama building, and it doesn't work. So if it doesn't work for them, if it doesn't work for other people, then it can't work for them. So I guarantee you, we'll let you know when the meeting takes place, and if we don't let you know, we'll tell Marilyn, and I guarantee you, she'll let you know. But that's, that's the way we'll do it.
Mr. Mayor, I was at the meeting briefly, or at the presentation briefly, and one of the things that was discussed was, and I didn't know the answer, so, and you may not either, but they did say that was going to be right up against the sidewalk, like the woodworking places now, but they were also discussing outside spaces and talked about balconies. And balconies are not allowed over a sidewalk, are they?
I don't know that.
I didn't think so, but I couldn't answer that.
We'll be ready for it when it comes, and I'm sure there'll be other people there. And basically, what it goes back to, it was my fault. I mean, I took, I believed it, I thought I was told this, 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 and I believed it. And apparently, they changed. And I was not, well, let's put it this way, I was not happy with it, but, you know, we'll address it. I mean, if they say they're going to come and they're going to do it, if they can beat our zoning, go for it. I don't see how they can.
Mr. Bonso.
So, to me, it sounds like that there was a letter that was sent, not your letter, but the letter that was sent by the building commissioner that was factually incorrect.
Well, without him being here, I'm not going to throw the building commissioner under the bus. I've been thrown under that bus so many times that I knew the route number, but I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus. I'm not going to tell you anything unless I'm 100% sure of it. I understand where you're coming from, but unless I can say that 100%, like, I would feel uncomfortable doing that.
Follow up?
Thank you, Madam President. So the follow-up is, is there going to be any kind of, I guess, investigation? And if there is, is there going to be any kind of discipline or any kind of reprimand for doing that?
Let's wait and see what we get to the end first. I mean, I, you know, when this all just came up, I didn't know the letter was wrote. So we'll look at it, and we'll go from there. If, you know, I don't want to say now, now, I've got all I need, I don't have, the mayor threatens discipline against, and we'll look at it. We'll explore the offense, we'll talk about it in the Planning Commission, and I guarantee you, we'll talk about it. I mean, you know, to make sure that it all gets aired out properly. But I want to preface it all by saying, you start with me. So we'll work our way through it. We'll get, we'll get it done.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. With all due respect, Mayor, you have a building commissioner, and I'm sure you follow his lead by what he's telling you, because he is supposed to be the expert. And that's all I'm going to say on that, except I would like to go through the chair, and I think Mr. Moore has something to say.
Mr. Moore.
Well, thank you, Madam President. I asked Mr. Stoker about this way back when, when the first issue was, when the issue was coming up. And I may be putting words in his mouth, but as I recall the conversation, what he said was, at the time, when they came in and they talked about the plan they were going to do, it wasn't the detailed, you know, let's lay out all of the plots and plans and everything and configure everything, it was, we're going to build a residential apartment building on Montgomery Road, is that allowed? And under the zoning, it's allowed. The issue, the zoning issues are, can you have parking that is across, in a lot across the street without a variance? And no, you have to get a variance to do that. So like, at least from what Mr. Stoker, I mean, at the time, he said, does this comply with the zoning? Well, yes, a project like this would comply with the zoning. The issues that are, that are, problems with the zoning code are kind of the more details, nitty-gritty, once you get and have to map out all the parking spaces. That's the information that I got from Mr. Stoker at the time. It's like, why, why would you send a letter if it didn't comply with, well, because this is what I wanted to know. And there's a logic to that, because part of what they want to know is, does it match, you know, are you trying to put a residential, a high-density residential project in a place that zoned, single-family, two-acre lots? And so that's what the state primarily wants to know. You're going to have a big giant, you got to change the zoning battle, or is it a question of a variance for us, a fence setback? There's differences in what is a violation of the zoning code. That, at least, is my understanding, after speaking with Mr. Stoker about the provision that he set.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to add that I spoke to Mr. Craig, who took care of the applications at the Ohio Finance Agency. And he said that the requirements, and it's in writing, were that the proposed project met all of our zoning requirements. And, you know, I think there's very, you know, I'm sure Mr. Stoker does this all the time, has to fill out these forms and do things. So I don't see that as a little error. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Mr. Bonso.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. And I, yeah, I agree with Mrs. Hanahan on this. From the way that the letter was described to me, do you?
I have a copy, but not with me.
Okay. Yeah, the way that the letter was described to me, it seemed, I thought it was worded in a way that it met all of our restrictions. So I'm just curious, when these, I would like us to look at, maybe in the Housing Committee, maybe we can refer it, but I'd like us to look at how, how often these kind of letters actually go out. Is there other letters that have gone out that have said that they meet our zoning requirements and they don't? So maybe we can add that to the agenda for the next one. But yeah, it's, it is concerning that we are saying that something meets zoning and it's not. I mean, there's other areas in the city, too, where I think that it's been told there's a consignment shop, or there's some kind of a shop on Montgomery Road, that they're selling used goods, but, you know, they got in calling themselves consignment, even though you can't go in there and actually consign. I'm not saying I'm really, I care about that right now, I'm just saying, there seems to be a pattern. So I just want to make sure that we are fully complying with our zoning code, to make sure that we don't have instances like this, where there's confusion about what's required and what's not, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bonso. Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President. Versing, coming up this Saturday and Sunday, the 14th and 15th, down at the Public Works Department, the city of Norwood, will be taking refrigerators, air conditioners, anything that has Freon that typically needs to be emptied of the Freon before you can put it out for the trash. We have a grant that, we have two days where they'll take your refrigerators, anything with Freon in it down there, down at Public Works Department, along with tires. You can't dispose of tires by putting them out to the You can't dispose of tires by putting them out to the curb, as some people do, but they also will be taking tires as part of this grant, this Saturday to 14th and Sunday to 15th of October, down at Public Works. They'll be taking all those items from Norwood residents only. So, thank you.
I might add, that counts towards our recycling totals as well. So, not only is it a good program for residents, it's a good program for our recycling efforts as well. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. I was hoping to ask a question to the mayor through the chair, if that's okay?
I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question to the mayor? Yeah. Cool. I was just curious, when, do you know when council is going to start seeing more details on the Pay Corps agreement that we reached with them?
Well, that, yeah, that's a really good question. Can I go ahead?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Late. No, it's, if you look at now, you got to take a bunch of attorneys, and then we got to look at a TIF agreement, we got to look at a development agreement, and then everything that goes along with that. And that will be, I can assure you, it will be a stack of papers that high. So the Law Department has been involved with KMK on that process, to begin that process, because like I said, it's development agreement, TIFs, and everything else, so, now, that's, that will be a while.
A while, okay.
And I think the groundbreaking, for whatever it's worth, I believe they want to do a groundbreaking in March. So even though it sounds like a long way off, there's still a lot of work to get that TIF and development agreement, get it all put together, and then come to council and get it approved.
Okay.
So they can't do anything until council approves it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any other new business? Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to schedule a Housing, Health and Recreation Committee meeting. Is everybody available, would anybody be available next Tuesday evening? 6 o'clock? Or is that too early?
Maybe 7:00.
October 17th?
I hope not. It's my only free week, so now I'm going to book it. Yes, the 17th? With 6 or 7?
7?
Does that work good for you? What time works better for you?
Earlier the better. But I can try and make it 7:30.
I mean, we can do 6:00. Are we going to have anybody from the city there?
Um, I don't know yet. I'm not even sure what I'm, what all I'm going to put on the agenda. We're going to have a lot.
Okay. I mean, if you have people from the city, it might be good to do it earlier than...
Mr. Clark, when would you, would you be available?
I couldn't do it either.
Okay.
Do we have a date and time yet?
Okay, do we want to do 6:30?
Yes, that'd be great.
The 17th at 6:30.
Here in council chambers?
Yes.
Housing, Health and Recreation on 10/17 at 6:30 PM. And you will put out an agenda?
I will put out an agenda tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President. Just to let everybody know, I've seen some people, some of the leaves are starting to fall, and people are putting them out to the curb. However, the leaf pickup is not going to begin until October the 23rd. So in the meantime, if you have leaves that you need to get rid of, you can stop by the Health Department. We do through our litter grant, we get brown bags that you can put the leaves and yard waste into until the 23rd. So I'd recommend stopping by there. As a Norwood resident, you can, you're entitled to pick up some of these bags, but the leaf pickup will not begin until October the 23rd. So just bear that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Is there any other new business? Speaking of leaves, the last of the Shepherd Chemical donation of trees will be planted this Saturday, October 14th, hopefully at Hunter Park, Birdwood Park, and Millcrest Park. So we are meeting at Hunter Park at 9:00 AM, again, Saturday, October 14th. A few will bring shovels and rakes. Hopefully, the holes will have already been dug by a company that Mr. Shepherd has graciously agreed to hire again. And you'll, we will just have to plant the trees and mulch the trees. So we'll start out at Hunter Park. Depending on how many volunteers show up, we may dispatch others to the other parks right away, or we'll go from park to park to park. So again, we thank Mr. Shepherd not only for his donation of the trees, but for making the job much easier for them to plant by having the holes dug already. So everyone is welcome, family-friendly event. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. Very generous of Mr. Shepherd to do that. Can you repeat which park that people should show up at?
Should show up at Hunter Park at 9:00 AM with rakes and shovels in hand.
Thank you so much.
And probably gloves, if you have gloves. It doesn't take very long, it's very satisfying, it's just a really nice project, and I'm sure that there are, we are having some of the volunteers from Shepherd Chemical there as well, and I would very much appreciate if there were some community involvement in this as well. So I posted it on Facebook, did an event on Facebook, and invited folks, so we'll see how many show up.
Great.
All right. Any other new business? So we'll move on to communications. The first is a letter from Mayor Williams regarding mayor's court fines for September.
Dear Madam President and members of council, enclosed, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of September 2017. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Mupper.
The letter be received and filed, and I'm complaining once again that the amount is ridiculous. $12,743. It's just, something's wrong.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzel. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from the Ohio Liquor Control regarding reschedule of liquor permit renewal hearing for Sherman Market.
Notice of hearing on renewal of permit pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 4303.271. The Division of Liquor Control will conduct a hearing upon the advisability of the renewal of the above-captured liquor permit. The objection was filed, and a hearing requested by the following authority, Norwood City Council. This hearing is rescheduled for October 30th, 2017, at 1:00 PM, and will be held in Meeting Room B in Cincinnati City Hall, 801 Plum Street, Cincinnati, Ohio. The permit holder and the objecting legislative authority have the right to be present, to be represented by council, to offer evidence, to require the attendance of witnesses, and to cross-examine witnesses at the hearing. Ohio Revised Code, Section 4301.28, requires representation of the legislative authority by the prosecuting attorney or the law director in this hearing. The chief law enforcement officer of the political subdivision or his representative may also appear and give testimony. A copy of the legislative resolution objecting to the renewal of the captioned permit is being sent with the original hearing notice to the permit holders at the permit address. If you have any questions concerning this matter, please feel free to contact the legal section at 614-644-2489. Sincerely, Michael Saris, Staff Attorney, Legal Section.
Mr. Blair.
I just have a question to the law director. Last I heard, they were going to be selling the building, or trying to. Do you have any updates whether they're planning on keeping it, or selling it, or what's going on with that whole situation?
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. The, Mr. Gary was downtown in the courthouse on another matter this morning, and ran into the attorney representing them, and they say they're getting close to selling the permit, but they've kind of said that for a while. So they've been working on, that's why it was continued, the hearing was originally continued, so they could sell it. Hopefully, it will be sold very soon, and we don't have to go through the exercise of going down there and saying, you know, a court already found that there was a nuisance, and that's why they closed the property, so can you please not renew it? So hopefully, that'll happen, but still gearing up in case it doesn't go full bore to make sure that they do not get this thing renewed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Much pleasure with the letter. Mr. Bonzel.
I move the letter be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is the letter that was added, a letter from Keith Moore regarding request for executive session.
Dear members of council, I write to ask that the council consider holding an executive session at its regularly scheduled meeting this Tuesday, October 10th, 2017, as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G3, so that I may confer with the council concerning disputes involving the council that are subject of pending court action. If you have any questions or comments about this request, please feel free to contact the Law Department. Sincerely, Keith D. Moore, Law Director.
Mr. Mupper.
I move the letter be received and filed, and that we go into executive session to discuss pending court action.
Pending an imminent litigation, may we put those words in?
That's what the law director said.
Okay.
All right. Just want to make sure. Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzel.
Is there going to be any updates on any imminent litigation?
We'll be discussing pending litigation.
Okay.
If you have questions about imminent litigation, we can talk about that, but I'm here to talk about pending litigation.
I don't, so.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We will now go into executive session. We will come back into regular session, but only for the purpose of adjourning. So if, or the folks here can leave the auditorium and cable, if you can turn off the TV and video, or video and audio.